If you'd all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Kirsten?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation in regard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Kirsten. Reminder to silence your cellphones if you have them with, and meeting documents are next to Commissioner Kelly, and if you need a hearing device, Robert would be able to help you with that. With that, we'll go and start with routine business.
Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is there any changes or corrections? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of September 24th, 2013.
Move the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $645,497.08.
Pay the bills.
Second, paying the bills.
Excuse me. We have a motion and a second to approve the bills, to pay the bills, not just to approve them, right?
Right.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion unanimously passes.
Item number four are reports. The South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance 2012 Membership Annual Report has been received and is placed on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel. A is to approve the routine action.
Motion to approve the routine action.
Second.
A motion and a second. Carrie, do you have anything to add to routine?
No.
Okay. Those in favor of approving routine action say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item B is to recognize significant employee anniversaries for October 2013. Carrie Dever.
Good morning. Carrie Dever from Human Resources. This month, we only have two for you. We have Leanne Harry, Assistant Legal in the State Attorney's Office, and she's celebrating 10 years of service. And then we also have Coria Ben Weston, who's a correctional officer in the jail, celebrating five. I don't believe that we have either one of them with us this morning, but we still want to congratulate them on their years of service.
They're at work.
Yes. Exactly.
Item C is to recognize volunteers in county government for September 2013.
I do this every month. It continues to impress me how many people we have working for us on a volunteer basis, over 200 employees per the month, working in seven or eight different areas. I should say volunteers, not employees, but individuals who are volunteering their time, so our things goes out to them.
Thank you Carrie. Again, we do appreciate the volunteer service that we have. It's incredible to see that many people be involved on a volunteer basis, so thank them for their service.
Item D is consider a motion to reclassify the current vacant accountant position in the auditor's office, pay grade 16, to a new classification of finance and budget officer at pay grade 23. Carrie Dever.
Good morning. This request is being made by Bob Litz, who I see is just joining us. He's making the request to take a vacant position and move that from accountant at a pay grade 16 to a finance and budget officer at a pay grade 23. I did attach a memo for you explaining the cost difference from a classification standpoint, and the only one thing that I would add from an HR perspective is that since it's getting so late in the year, I know this is budgeted for 2014, even if we started recruitment here fairly shortly, it wouldn't be filled probably until about that timeframe. But Bob's here, he can certainly explain his request if you have him.
Bob, do you have any comments?
Bob Litz from the auditor's office. Now, there's a lot of moving parts, and we still have some work to do on this, and hope to bring more information about candidates forward to you at some time, and then we'll nail down that budget numbers a lot better.
Any questions of Bob? No questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the reclassification, and this is a new classification. We did have a current position that's open, that we have changed the job description, and of course, with that goes the pay grade issue, so. Any other comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
There are no application for abatement today. There's one notice, and it's to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice of sale, an official bid form for $2,000, $2,180,000 in limited tax general obligation certificates of participation, Series 2013A, Minnehaha County, South Dakota.
Good morning. Bob Litz again from the auditor's office, and we are seeking permission to publish the notice of sale at the proper time for our current refunding. The published date of the sale will be on or after October 27th, 2014.
Thank you Bob. Any questions for Bob? Any motions to publish?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and two seconds to publish. Should pass. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no planning and zoning notices today. The next item is petition for compromise of lien. John Pecus.
Thank you Cindy. The auditor's office received an application on a compromise of lien. The applicant is in the process of purchasing a home. Apparently, there's been an update related to the application. We did receive the HUD one statement, the application for closing costs, as well as his last lease, 2011 and 2010 tax returns. So those are available for us to review. The applicant did drop off his application after he received notice from the title company of the county aid lead. That is on DPNO number 21379, an amount of $12,922.05 in his name only. The active portion of the lien dates from July 2000 through September of 2012, would have been last year. The active portion of the lien is for public defender, court-appointed attorney, and public advocate, legal services. There have been small payments of $150 during this time. Should be noted that the county commission compromised a prior balance in the amount of $3,572.50 in full with no payment in December of 1998. So we're going back 15 years. The applicant is employed, has an annual income of $37,883. He lists assets of $3,550 and liabilities of $1,595, though these appear to be monthly living expenses and not listing any outstanding major debt. There is the HUD statement for you to review related to the sale of the home, and apparently in looking down on the left column, which is primarily the borrower's side, not the seller's side, of the HUD statement, at the bottom, the cash due from the applicant is So that's how much is due from the borrower at the close. Currently, you know, his lien is currently $12,922.05. So obviously, this is going to be a significant amount of money for him to come up with to effectuate this purchase. Apparently, the applicant is requesting a compromise, a release of the lien upon full payment of $1,000, 13 percent. The applicant stated he did not realize the size of the lien, and that currently only has $1,000 to put towards the lien to complete the closing on his home purchase. And of course, we have been provided that extra information that is referenced in the briefing memo. So, in looking also at his tax returns, he does not have a significant amount of income, but it looks like his total gross would have been from 2010 was $29,000, and the year before, gross income was $22,000 last year. So I'll make a motion to accept the $1,000. I don't know if I'll get a second.
I'm going to second it.
There is a motion and a second. I will tell the applicant that you do not need to stand, you do not need to approach the microphone or identify yourself. If you are interested in making any comments, we'd be happy to hear from you or your attorney. So if there's any comments that would like to be made, you can do them directly from your chair, or if your attorney would like to make comments on your behalf, since you like to speak in front of the microphone anyhow, I'll have you come to the front and identify yourself, as if we didn't know who you were.
Good morning. My name is Arlie Brandy.
Good morning Arlie.
I've worked at Brandy Schrader Metters for 40 years now. I haven't known Jeff a long time. He's 49, never owned a house. Been in the penitentiary a long time for assault. The substantial portion of this lien is for court-appointed attorney. The state made a mistake and let him out of the penitentiary early. He immediately went to work nine years ago. He was working for a month and a half, and they realized that they'd made the mistake, and they went out to work and arrested him and put him back in the penitentiary, and he went before a judge, and the judge said, "You want an attorney?" And he said, "Uh, yeah." And he sat in the penitentiary while this case ground out, went to the Supreme Court, and $12,000, about $12,000 later, they said, "It's, you should have been in jail anyway. You lose." He was never told by a judge, by his court-appointed attorney, or anyone that he owed about $12,000. He worked, continued to work, once he got out in 2004, nine years ago. In 2010, he made about $29,000. He was a bricklayer. In 2011, he made $22,000. And he said, "I just couldn't live with a $500 check." And then he got laid off and get a $250 check. Got behind his bills, caught up on his bills, worked on his credit, started working for Electrus, which builds generators for shale oil. He started out at $11. Now they pay him $15.81. I know that there was a debt forgiven in 1998, that was 15 years ago, and that was the other Jeff. He's worked hard, he wants to live the American dream. The $17,000 is about $13,000 of your money. He has about $1,000 that he's going to use for furniture. He qualifies like anyone else as a first-time homebuyer. We're just trickling information. This morning, from Jennifer Dykstra at Wells Fargo, attaches a copy of the good faith that we sent to you. You will see that South Dakota Housing Gift Fund credit is not there. It will come out on the HUD settlement statement at closing, and that's $5,000. So if he uses his $1,000, he can buy a $117,000 house.
Thank you Arlie. Would the applicant like to make any comments? You are not required to do that, and you can stay where you're at. If not, are there any other comments that anyone would like to make?
Well, I had a conversation with Arlie on the telephone yesterday, and he said that he would get us this information, and here we are at 9:00 in the morning, and it was on our desk.
Yep. Thank you for the extra efforts. We do appreciate that.
My only comment, I'm going to support it, and I know this would be totally out of the norm of what we have been doing in the past, but he's going to be a homeowner and hopefully, a tax-paying citizen in our community. And by the amount of money this man makes, I don't think he's ever going to pay off the amount of lien that he owns us in the first place. So if we can put him in a house and try to make him, get him to pay his taxes and his property taxes, at least we have some income that will help to put back into this community. So for that reason, I'm going to support it.
Thank you Commissioner. Any other comments? The only comment that I, or question I have for you Arlie, if you wouldn't mind responding, is my understanding is that there haven't been any additional charges, any criminal activity at all, since this was taken care of?
None. He finally figured out it is 45.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other comments? We do need, I believe, three of the four votes, correct? Because Commissioner Barth is not here, so I think we need a roll call vote.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Yes.
Kelly?
No.
Pecus?
Yes.
Bennega?
Yes. Go buy your house. Thank you for starting over. You're welcome.
The next item is opportunity for public comment.
Good morning.
Good morning. Pat Herman for County Planning, and Commissioner Heiburger asked that I address you today, and I have two announcements to make. The first is an introduction. Dave, if you could come up here. This is Dave Heinhold. He has joined our department as a Planner One, and we've thrown him right into the fire. He is working on code enforcements, and at the front counter, and first planning commission meeting, he got to stand up and do a presentation right away. So he's joined us from Indiana, and we're very excited he's here, and we're putting him to good use.
Good morning David, and welcome. Would you like to make a few comments about yourself?
No.
We've already got him trained well.
Just really happy to be here and got this opportunity to serve the county.
Welcome, and I look forward to seeing you again in the future. Good luck. And your second announcement?
My second announcement, if I can have Travis Holm come up here. He has served as an intern with us all summer, and you saw him on the MS4 project, and very excited to announce for him that Friday is his last day with us, and he has gotten an offer and accepted to work for Lawrence, Kansas, as a Planner One for the city. And we have really appreciated him this summer. He's done a lot of good work for us, and so we wish him well in his future career.
Go Jayhawks.
Yeah. Nice to have you there.
You may need an attitude adjustment.
I'm at the Grizzlies at Iowa State.
See, they even had to go to Iowa State to get someone. That's right. That's right.
Thank you for your, thank you for your service, and good luck in Lawrence, Kansas. I wish you well, that's for sure. You did a lot of great things for us, and we do appreciate that, so thanks.
Great weather down there.
Good luck.
Good luck. Thank you Pat. Good morning.
Good morning. I want to use the public opportunity to talk to you about something that didn't get on the agenda, that I have some concerns about. And it started out lately that we've been making significant changes to people's job descriptions around here, and that does impact the salary schedule. It impacts everybody else that works in every department, and when we do it once or occasionally, we seem to be doing it fairly frequently. So we just made some changes in the auditor's office to job descriptions. You already have a salary compensation study out there. I know the scope of that study is not to review those job descriptions, but I think if you're going to make these kinds of changes that affect people who've been here like 40 years, then I think that you need to take a bigger look and increase the scope of your salary compensation study, because I think it's creating some inequities, and I don't think that's right. I guess my experience has always been that one person can make a difference, and if I see something I don't think is quite right or fair, I stand up and say so. So I, you know, we just do it every now and then, but it seems like in the last couple of weeks, we've made significant changes, and it impacts other people that have been here a long time. So I'm asking you to consider expanding the scope of your salary compensation study to include a review of everybody's job descriptions, so it's fair. So that's my comment.
I will respond to that, of course.
Okay, sure, no problem.
First of all, I think three times that I can remember in the three and a half years I've been here would not make it every day occurrence, like you stated. It's not frequent. Secondly, I think doing job description reviews is good, but I also think that when we have imminent retirements, that we need to do good corporate planning and making sure that those individuals are taken care of, and that we cover our bases. You already had your time, so you let me finish. The other issue is, is that when we do make these studies that we've already agreed to in the budget, that should be part of that process. I'd be disappointed if it wasn't, because frankly, that's the way that most systems review the steps in the process, is that they do identify and compare. And the only way you can compare is to do job description comparisons and all that good stuff. So, we take your advice as good advice, but I will also tell you that I do not think three times in the last three and a half years is a pattern of consistency. So I take an exception to that.
Can I ask for a little privilege to say one or two more things?
Of course.
It would be short. Well, part of the problem I have is also in the budget hearings that we had, and even when, it's hard to keep it non-specific, but we did not say a while back that, my understanding is this increase was not in the 2014 budget. But it doesn't really matter. I guess, what do you think, three times is too much or not? I think that it's treating some people, for example, in my office unfairly, if we're just going to do it like that. And I had to stand up for those people, so thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Anybody else have any comments? Any other comments from individuals? This is the opportunity and public comment to make comments that you would like to make that aren't on the agenda. Nobody's moving? We'll go to item 10.
Item 10 is to issue a proclamation recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Minnehaha County. Amy Carter.
Good morning Amy.
Amy Carter with Children's Inn and the Minnehaha County Family Violence Council, and Heather Weig, the same, Children's Inn and the Family Violence Council. As we've done for as many years as I can remember, we've come before you to ask for proclamation for October, which is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So if you'd like, I can read the proclamation, or if you wanted to read that, I wasn't sure the process.
You can do a much better job.
Okay. Whereas, 4 million women are victims of severe assault by their intimate partners annually in the United States, and nearly 1 in 4 women are likely to be abused by their partner in her lifetime. And whereas, children who grow up in violent homes are abused and neglected at a rate higher than national average. And whereas, in 2012, 1,380 domestic assault cases and 245 protection order violation cases were investigated by the Sioux Falls Police Department and the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. And whereas, in 2012, 47 percent of the murders in South Dakota were a result of domestic violence. And whereas, a dedicated group of citizens have been fighting domestic violence together through the Minnehaha County Family Violence Council for 31 years. And whereas, wearing a purple ribbon during the month of October and attending our Take Back the Night Dinner program and candlelight march on October 10th, 2013, at the Old Courthouse Museum at 6:00 PM will demonstrate support for the victims of domestic violence. And whereas, the voices of victims offer us important insight into the personal pain and loss that victims endure, and are voices that deserve our attention, respect, and support. Now therefore, we, the Minnehaha County Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2013 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to become actively involved to work toward improving victim safety and holding perpetrators of domestic violence accountable for their actions against individual victims and our society as a whole.
Thank you Amy. Heather, do you have any comments?
I'm here first. She said she'd only come up here if she didn't have to talk.
Oh, okay.
I just appreciate, I know we, a lot of the commissioners are attending our Take Back the Night event this year, which is next Thursday. We're very excited about it. It's at the Old Courthouse Museum, which is a new location for us. We're doing a dinner and a program, and then our candlelight march, and so far, we're really excited about the number that we anticipate to attend, and it's a great opportunity to get that out there. Today, we will be putting purple ribbon magnets on all of the law enforcement vehicles, and hopefully, those will remain on for at least a month, to raise that awareness, and we know our law enforcement supports domestic violence as well. So, I mean, you'll see the silent witnesses, the red figurines throughout the community this month as well, and those represent victims who lost their life to domestic violence. So thank you for your time today.
Thank you for your work. I don't know how the two of you and all your staff do what they do, because that's an incredible, difficult job, but so valuable to this community, so thank you for all your efforts. We do appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Dick, do you have a comment?
Yeah, Amy. The 13 higher than 80 cases last year, how does that compare to prior years?
It's been about that. It's, you know, up and down just a little bit, but that's pretty similar to previous years, yes.
Other questions, comments?
Well, John? I wasn't going to say anything, but I noticed recently that when I've been visiting my physician, they ask me if I've been a victim of domestic violence, and of course, I answer no, but one interesting point that has come up is that I have been involved in several protection orders, and what's been interesting is that, at least for the victim, I've been receiving a lot of subpoenas and orders of the court going into their medical records, and they're pawing through their medical records, seeing, well, you know, how can you allege that there's been this assault when you told your physician in previous times that you've never been assaulted and you're not in fear? So they're actually using that as evidence against them, and I don't think that's appropriate, but you know, sometimes you can have unintended consequences.
Right. That's really discouraging to hear.
It is, it is, but it's happening.
Yeah, because there's a big push in the medical community to do those questions.
For awareness, that's right.
Yeah, yep. And I, if I could just comment, I believe that victims don't feel comfortable disclosing that at the doctor, so that's what happens.
They don't, and so it's becoming now evidence that's now used against them.
Wow. That's good to know. I appreciate you telling me that. We can see what we can do about that. Probably, I don't know, it's a big issue, but we're aware of it now, so thank you.
Thank you again. Good luck. We'll see you next week.
Item number 11 is to authorize the chairman to sign the 2014 state and local agreement between Minnehaha County and the South Dakota Department of Emergency Management. Lynn DeYoung.
Commissioners Lynn DeYoung, Emergency Management. What you have is the yearly agreement between the state of South Dakota and Minnehaha County within the emergency management office. It's very similar to the past years, and very similar to the, basically, the agreement you saw about a month ago. A month ago, what you saw was funding for last year, and that obviously comes from the federal government, and with all of their issues moving things along, that's why it comes as late as it does. This is a new work agreement between Minnehaha County and the state of South Dakota. The work agreement includes 13 different areas that I work with the state of South Dakota to complete for the emergency management program. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but at the end, I'm looking for a motion for the commission to authorize the chairperson and the emergency manager to sign the articles of agreement.
Thank you Lynn. Anybody have any comments, any questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Lynn, how restrictive, you know, we've talked in the past about Doug working with the sheriff's department on training and stuff. How, is it spelled out in the grant, or how restrictive that money is?
As long as we currently go at the path we're doing, where it's an assistance, you know, program because of what he does, they don't typically have too many problems, but if we get more into some other areas, it'd probably be easier to talk offline than they start doing job audits and things like that, so it does become more restrictive in that manner, but.
Is it spelled out anywhere though, or do we know that they would or would not approve that kind of expenditure?
Basically, if you're talking that he would work directly for the sheriff's office?
No, no, let's say that, these are all hypothetical, but let's say Doug spent 10 hours a week on doing training, which he's very qualified for, for the sheriff's office, who I don't believe at this time has a trainer, I'm not sure. Would that 10 hours be disqualified from the match, or?
In other areas, it is disqualified, but basically, what the state would come in and do is an audit, and they'd figure it out that way. So they'd audit that timeframe and decide whether they feel that it's emergency management related or not. So it's hard to answer, because.
Well, yeah, I mean, if it isn't clear to you, I don't understand.
Yeah.
I mean, could you, could you get a ruling from somebody that said yes or no?
I think we'd have to have a pretty specific plan laid out to do that. Right now, he assists someone required and everything, and they don't have a problem with it, but I think as long as you start scheduling it, then they're going to look at that differently, and then perform that audit, and at that point, say yea or nay.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions for the emergency management program, and what I'm going to be up to this year?
Any other questions for Lynn? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve. She'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with the state. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12 was to consider a motion to concur with the South Dakota Department of Transportation bid award for Project BRO 805064, replacement of Bridge 50-298-200 in the amount of $719,038.30 to Swing Construction Company, DJ Boothie.
Good morning Commissioners. DJ Boothie, Highway Superintendent. This item is to concur with the bid award for the SD DOT. They led a project from our bridge system that had been initiated several years ago through Bob Meester, and the construction estimate initially was about $500,000. They added a whole bunch of testing equipment for a research project through the DOT, and the bids ended up coming in just over $719,000. We had them pull out the testing equipment that they had added, which was about $100,000. We had them pull out the testing equipment that they had added, which was about $178,228. And so, our participating costs, if you will, are then $540,810.30. And so, we will be responsible for 20% of that as part of our cost share, which is about $108,162.60 through our agreement with this project through the DOT. And so, today, we'll just need to consider a motion and approve the concurrence of the bid award that the state will make with the contractor who is Swingin' Construction out of North Dakota.
Thank you, D.J. Anyone have any questions for D.J.? My only question is the one you obviously would expect from me, I guess, is that the bid estimate was 640-something, 645. So, we were off by...
I think about 20...
$60,000 or about 10%. Any reason?
The DOT prepared the engineer's estimate, and they have a very standardized method for preparing their estimate based off costs of other construction projects that they have. And it could be the bidding climate. It could be the estimate itself. With this research project item that they had, I'm sure that it was difficult to estimate how much that would cost. And so, that might have played part of it. I don't know exactly why the cost was, I think 11% over the bid estimate. But I would think it would be a combination of those things. And ultimately, we had estimated this project to cost $500,000 without any of the extra equipment. And when you pull out their stuff, like I said, it's $520,000. So, I think that's fairly close within what we had estimated it originally costing.
And there were no South Dakota bidders?
I believe that there were South Dakota bidders.
There were?
I don't have the bidding list in front of me, but from what I had heard before, there was a fair number of bidders and there was South Dakota bidders.
Graves and Sioux Falls Construction. Sioux Falls Construction was about $2,000 bucks higher. Now, in the memo, it does say that we could relet, we could wait and relet this bid.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I'll tell you what, we're talking $2,000 bucks on a 700-plus-thousand-dollar contract, and it's going to North Dakota. Swingins out of North Dakota. I have a problem with this one. No offense, D.J., but...
I'm not taking any offense. I will say that the state let this project.
Yeah, I know. It wasn't you.
Yeah. The state let the project, and I don't think that they would have a problem going through the process again. Now is an abnormal time to let a contract for the following year, because everybody's busy finishing up older projects. We might see a little bit cheaper prices, but that's hard to say. We have done several projects with Swingin' Construction.
Yeah, and they do great work.
Yeah. I don't think it's a question about the quality of work at all. I think it's an issue about doing business in state, if possible. But you, I'm sure, have an opinion about that, and I understand where you're coming from. Any other comments? Is there a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion to relet, and I'm gonna just see if I can get a second.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to relet the bids. Any other comments?
The briefing memo that was provided by South Dakota DOT is that it indicates that, you know, Minneah County, to decide whether to accept the bid or not, you may choose to relet this bid next spring and hope for lower bids. You know, we're talking a difference of $2,500 bucks. And we've got Sioux Falls Construction, which is one of our local companies. And this is a heck of a lot of money. And I just think that at this point, with this kind of close parity on the bids, it's okay for us to take, catch our breath, and to go ahead and relet it. Just last week, we had a situation where D.J. came in here, and we didn't even get bids. So, we had to go ahead and kick that one down the road, too. So, you know what, and D.J. doesn't have a problem with it. So, let's go ahead and just catch our breath and see where we're gonna be at.
When is the project supposed to start?
As soon as weather allows, next year. I would expect it to start probably in April.
Okay. Commissioner Heiburger?
When will they relet bids then?
That will be up to the DOT to decide. They have a monthly bid letting process. I think that it probably will take them two or three months, once they're notified of this, to get it back on their schedule.
So, maybe by February.
Anyone else have any comments?
Well, if I can just indicate that apparently, the state also indicated on the briefing memo, you know, their estimate was $645,000. So, this is higher than what they were actually expecting. So, I, you know, I think it's okay for us to catch our breath and to see where we're at.
Other comments? I will just make my comment. My concern is not so much, I'd obviously like to see a South Dakota bidder, but to have a bid that's 11% over the bid estimate is significant. And $74,000 is a lot on this particular project. So, I would like to see it relet in a different bidding climate, if you will. And I think that you've already suggested that the climate next spring will be a lot different than this fall. So, I think we're gonna need a roll call vote. We have a motion and a second.
I have one question. The, I mean, now everybody knows all the numbers. Will this affect, would this bring in more bidders, perhaps? And I guess would it affect Swingin', ever bidding things in South Dakota or Minneah County because of this?
They might consider that, and everybody knows their numbers right now. But these numbers will change. Steel prices and concrete prices go up and down all the time. And so, three months from now, these numbers will be different. I don't think anybody was bidding this thinking that they were gonna be the only contractor to bid it, which would have caused for a highly inflated price. And so, I don't expect them to change a lot, but I do expect them to go down. A lot of times, when we're bidding projects this late in the year, contractors might not have enough time to even look at it, close enough to come up with a reasonable price. So, it will be inflated because of that. And bidding it in February or something like that, that's the prime time to be bidding projects. And so, all contractors will get a fair chance to take a close look at it and put together their most competitive price.
Is that traditionally the problem, that late in the year, they've got... And why does the state bid a next year's project this early out?
This was supposed to be bid for construction this year. And it was bid, the way that the terms were written in the contract, that they could have still constructed it this year if they had crews available. And so, we were bidding it with the potential of having to still construct it this year. They had to complete it within so many working days by the middle of next summer. And so, if they chose to use those working days this fall, they could have done that and completed the project this fall. Or they could have elected to use the working days next spring and early summer and complete it by the middle of next summer, which is what they elected to do.
Has this bridge got load limits right now?
It does. It's in very good condition.
Are they low or is it just a...
I'm not sure exactly what the limits are. It's not a three-ton bridge or a six-ton bridge.
Okay.
It does have posted loads. The traffic on that road is relatively low, but it's a fair number of vehicles for a township road, and...
I thought it was a county road.
No, it's a township road. Spook Road is a spook road.
Is it a paved road, though?
Yeah. No, it's a gravel road, but...
Well, we were told last week, wasn't it, that it was...
Oh, you're getting confused with the other one.
You might, yeah.
This is the one east of Brandon?
No, this is south of, southeast of Brandon.
Okay.
Right.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second to reject the bids and rebid it, correct? We're gonna need a roll call vote.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Pecos?
Yes.
Bennigan?
Yes.
Yeah, we all agreed.
More work for you, D.J.s.
It's no problem. I think we'll get better prices, so...
Thank you.
You have good luck on your motion.
Item number 14.
Item 13 is to consider a bid award and rejection for the purchase of two sport utility vehicles.
I'm sorry. I wanted to go to item 14 because I think, Ryan, you have a commitment, time commitment this morning? Oh, well, then, we're gonna make you sit. That way, your presentation's shorter. Go ahead, D.J.
Okay. Commissioners, pursuant to your authorization, on September 11th, we held a bid letting for two sport utility vehicles with trade-in. Because of the discussion that we had last time authorizing the bid opening, I'm not sure if you're interested in awarding this or not. So, you have some information through the briefing memo about the vehicles that are proposed to be replaced and the bid opening itself. And if you would like, I could answer any questions about them at this time.
Any questions for D.J.?
Well, you know, I think with the briefing, oh, I'm sorry. So, just to be clear, with the state bid, you had $61,080. And with the bids we got from, looks like, a local provider, it was $40,200.
Right.
So, you save some money.
Well, the state bid does not account for any trade-ins.
Right. Right.
And so, the reason that it's cheaper is with the trade-ins.
Any, Commissioner Heiburger?
I'm not gonna support it, just because we talked about our new policy for purchasing vehicles. And I know at this point, it says $100,000 in our proposed policy, but I'm not sure that I want to go with 100,000 miles. I don't know if I said dollars, but 100,000 miles. And I also feel that there's still enough wear and tear in these cars, that our vehicles, these are Yukons, and I feel like we should go another year with them. And so, I'm not gonna support the motion of new vehicles.
I agree with Cindy. I think, you know, we, things have changed a little bit since you originally started thinking about this. And I think our whole vehicle policy, I think we'll wait another year with this thing without any problem.
Ken, the policies that we have discussed have not been distributed and responded to, is that correct, from department heads?
We have distributed the policy, the proposed policy, to the departments that maintain fleets within our, within the county. We have a meeting scheduled with those departments on October 7th, which is next Monday, to go over the proposed policy and solicit their input and to bring comments that were made at the last commission meeting when you reviewed the policy about some of the changes and some of the things that perhaps you'd like to see and that. So, we're taking those comments as well, including your comment about the $150,000 and seeing how that stacks up within our inventory and that. But my hope is, once the departments that have the fleets have an opportunity to digest what's in the proposed policy, bring any of their suggestions that they have as well, and then we will bring those back to the commission for formal action. But that's scheduled for next Monday.
Well, I can't make a motion, but it would seem to me that we need to have a policy that we've agreed to before we start making decisions on what purchases should be, so...
I would move to deny the, or to not accept the bid. Would that be the notion?
Reject. Reject.
Well, we also have the option to defer until after the policy.
Right.
But...
Is that to reject or to defer?
To reject.
Is there a second to reject?
If I change the order to defer?
I'll second it.
I could make one comment, too.
Absolutely.
By state law, we have 30 days to accept or reject a bid award. And this was on September 11th, so next Tuesday would be the last opportunity you have a chance to make any kind of motion on the bid award.
Keep going for your bid.
Yeah, that's right.
We have a motion to defer. For how long? Till next week?
I guess we don't have much choice.
Well, you have plenty of choices.
I'm not even gonna be here next week.
I'll make a motion to defer...
I withdraw my motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion to defer to either next week or at a time when it's convenient to relet the bid.
Is there a second? Is there a second? That motion dies?
Right.
I'm gonna make a motion to defer until the policy is completed. Does that work? No? Well, we might not vote on the policy next week.
We don't have a second?
If Dick isn't here, I kinda want Dick's input on it. I'm just gonna make a motion to reject the bid.
Second.
Okay, now we have to, we have a motion and a second to reject. Any comments?
Well, Dick isn't gonna be here, and Jeff isn't even here. So, I just think with this kind of decision, I think we need the input of all the commissioners.
Well, I also believe that probably, even though we only had the 30 days, the number probably wouldn't change in two months with...
We'll see.
Any other comments? We're making Ryan really nervous. We have a motion and a second to reject. Let's do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Pecos?
Yes.
Bennigan?
Yes. I'll redo it.
Sorry, D.J.
Item 14 is a briefing on updates to the Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center Policies and Procedures Manual, Adoption to Be Considered on October 15th. Ryan Thornell and Todd Cheever.
Good morning, Ryan. We're sorry we're running late. We'll get you there on time.
I can talk fast. It's okay.
You wanna identify yourself?
Yeah, while she's pulling up, I have a few slides that I sent along to perhaps help you follow along. Ryan Thornell from the University of Sioux Falls. I'm an assistant professor of criminal justice there. Been there for roughly three and a half years. The first slide that she'll pull up here is simply a brief background slide to kind of bring you up to speed on my involvement in this process. You'll recall back in the summer of 2012, there was a facility inspection team that was compiled of volunteers from the community. And we went to some training. And we were tasked with going into the JDC and assessing and evaluating their operations and their facilities in response to the JDAI model that the county had adopted for juvenile corrections. And so, we went in, the summer 2012. We put out the final report last fall, roughly between October and November. And what that report did was, it was really, it's an extensive report that detailed the recommendations of the committee, broken down by specific areas, recommending changes to JDC's operations and facilities and to be in compliance and aligned with as many JDAI standards as possible. And so, to briefly tell you the areas that the facility inspection team looked at, we looked at the classification of intake processes, the health services processes, the accessibility processes of visits, mail, and telephone, the programming that is offered to the juveniles, the training and supervision of their employees, the overall environment of the JDC, the processes revolving restraints, isolation practices, due process protections, and grievance practices. And then finally, safety overall with the facility and of the juveniles and staff. After doing that, that facility inspection, the JDC came back meeting 68% of the JDAI standards. So, more than half the standards, the majority of the standards, were met. 27% of the standards were not met, and another 5% were partially met. So, overall, the JDC did well, based upon a facility inspection and compliance with JDAI standards. And then finally, my involvement became more formal in February of 2013, when I was contracted to come in and help develop, revise, and rewrite the JDC Policy and Procedure Manual in response to this facility inspection and in response to the JDAI model. And so, that's what brings me here today. And so, what I'd like to do, if you would allow, is to simply walk through a few slides. I only have five more, I believe, that detail just the very high level, what I consider significant changes or alterations to the JDC Policy Manual. And I'll also say, from the onset, that I've communicated with Attorney Katmeyer prior to today, and he's reviewed the policies. And the revisions made based upon his suggestions have all been made, I believe, to a level of satisfaction. So, I'll just, I'll say that at the onset to defer for a potential question. But the first, most glaring need of the facility inspection team was... But the first, most glaring need of the, of the facility inspection team was the need for qualified mental health professional, either onsite or at least an enlarged involvement into the JDC's practices. The glaring need revolving around juvenile suicide prevention, and so that was the first step that we took, and we wrote a policy surrounding suicide prevention protocol in which we created a staff alert process, we created level one, level two, and level three alerts, that the staff at the JDC can assign to a juvenile which would necessitate, such as a level one, a level two, would necessitate a qualified mental health professional being contacted and perhaps coming onsite to evaluate the juvenile in a very short amount of time in order to make sure we properly address their suicide risk. And so that was one of the initial policies that we put in place, it's policy eight point six, and it's been implemented and it's operating with Southeastern Behavioral. The second area was medical services. This was a complete rewrite of the chapter, that's chapter twelve, and we went through policy by policy and rewrote the entire chapter to reflect current practices in the JDC, but also to incorporate the direction the JDC's heading with requiring physical evaluations or examinations of juveniles that are there for a certain amount of time, requiring dental examinations if juveniles are there longer than sixty days, requiring specific, or outlining specific procedures that the JDC staff must follow if certain warning signs are displayed or if an evaluation is completed, so forth and so on. So that, that chapter was rewritten, and I believe Todd and his staff are working to implement that as well, and Todd is also seeking some, some medical services, or perhaps expansion of the medical services outside of what the JDC currently has to, to better implement the JDAI standards. The third area is the access policies, which I said at the beginning was visits, phone and mail, so access by, of the juveniles, the outside world, really. Some of the changes that were made here, we redid the admissions policy in order to allow a juvenile to phone calls upon admission, one of which has to be to a parent, guardian, or custodian, the other to another individual with very, with fewer boundaries attached to that, so it could potentially be a brother, it could potentially be a friend, it could be an employer. We do, the requirement is that they have to abide by any no contact orders that are in place, but the JDAI model seeks to give them an expanded amount of access, and so that's one of the ways that they do that, is by allowing the second phone call to be to a wider available group that they could contact. Another thing that we wrote into policy that is a new change is the visitation hours. The JDC, because they have fewer juveniles there, sees this time as the ability to expand visitation hours and see how those work within the facility, outside of just weekends, so it's been written to allow for weeknight, or weekday and weeknight visits within some limits of, of time. But that's, again, reflective of the JDAI model. We expanded mail supplies that were afforded to them, we, we increased the number of stamps they could get. And the biggest change, in my opinion, in the access policies is the, the bottom point on the slide, we eliminated, within reason, when there's reasonable suspicion, this doesn't exist, but we eliminated staff reading incoming and outgoing mail, just arbitrarily, really because they could. The JDAI model doesn't support that, the facility inspection team as, as an entire group did not support that, and so the staff are able to do that when there's reasonable suspicion, such as the address that the letter's going to might be to a victim, or something along those lines, and so it's written in the policy, those boundaries are written in the policy, but there's, the policy reflects that no more staff just picking up mail, getting incoming mail, picking up outgoing mail and reading it just to read it. So that, in my opinion, is the biggest change in that section. So I'll just flip to the next slide, if that's okay. Incident reporting is another big change, which actually goes along with the bottom, the third change, disciplinary process. It's really a terminology change, as well as procedural change. Incident reports prior to this process involve disciplinarian fractions, and in the corrections world now, you really need to separate the two, you need to have incident reports that encompass, you know, some of the big things that occur at the facility that might not necessarily include individual juveniles, such as a fire in the kitchen, or something like that, a flooding of a hallway. It also might be an incident that encompasses a lot of juveniles, such as a disturbance or a riot, that you would want written in an incident report, and then the individual circumstances, such as rule violations of juvenile, would be documented in the new rule violation form, which is encompassed in the disciplinary process changes. So the incident reporting process is changed significantly, and there's tracking processes written into the policies that require the JDC to keep incident reports for a certain amount of time, to monitor the contents of those incident reports, so there's a better idea of, of what's going on in the facility, if they need to reflect back historically of what happened on certain dates, they can do that, 'cause it's documented now in these incident reports. The grievance process is a big process, based upon the JDAI model, they take grievances very seriously, and so our, our new policy reflects that. Every juvenile grievance is read and considered. Obviously, if it's an ongoing grievance, we have language written in there that, you know, sending the same grievance in over and over does not merit the same level of inspection every time, but the kid, the juveniles are in there so few, so few days that that's not really a problem, as it is in larger facilities. But the process is much more formalized now, every grievance is read, every grievance, grievance is responded to, and grievances are tracked. And then the, the third detail on the slide, the disciplinary process and due process, this is chapter thirteen of the new manual, considerable changes were made here, really a rewrite of the chapter, and in addition to the chapter, policy thirteen-three, which is the disciplinary outline, is really a brand-new policy, and then the content of thirteen-one are brand-new, which are all the detailed rules that juveniles have to abide by, and the level, the severity levels associated with those, so now there are, you know, the disapproved sort of violations, the minor violations, and then major violations, clearly detailed in the policy, which correspond with the thirteen-three consequences associated with those disapproved minor and major violations. Again, this is a big change, especially for JDC staff, because all the terminology changed, all the consequence terminology changed, such as a juvenile who used to get placed in their room for an extended period of time was on review status, now it's called either short-term isolation or confinement, and so that's just an example of the terminology change. The significant procedural change in this chapter is the creation of a conduct proceeding, which is really the due process protections that were not in place prior to this, that are now in place, initiated by the JDAI model, and, and this is, concerns juveniles who might be eligible for a disciplinary sanction that would necessitate them being in their room for four hours or more, in any one given period of time, and JDAI says that if it's four or more hours, they need to have due process protections in place. And so we've established this process in which they have the ability to go in front of, as neutral of a hearing officer as we can get, going to the home detention officers who are not directly involved in their day-to-day operations inside the JDC, and so the juvenile can elect to have this conduct proceeding in order to challenge the extent of their confinement. And we also reduced the violations that can send them into confinement, really down to four very serious violations, being assault, sexual assault, riot, and escape. And those are the four behaviors that can get them into an extended period of confinement, which is, again, four or more hours. And we've also capped the period of confinement at seven, no more than seventy-two hours without a substantial review hearing, which, again, is detailed in this policy. And, and I will add that, we did insert mental health, qualified mental health professionals to the extent possible, with the resources we have, into this process as well, so if we do have a juvenile in short-term isolation or in extended confinement, we do, we have it written in the policy, if they need access, they are granted access if requested, to a qualified mental health professional. So on to the next slide, intake, admission, and releases, really just a revision of the processes to reflect JDAI standards. The risk assessment instrument is really the big change that was made to the intake process, which has been occurring since, really since the county adopted the JDAI model, so that was just making sure that process was inserted into the policy. And then we expanded the admission process, and we really formalized the admission process to make it more, as seamless as possible, given the facility restrictions. We really wanted a seamless admission process for the juvenile, so that it could, so that they could essentially become normalized into the JDC as quickly as possible. We tried to remove long periods of sitting and waiting during the admission process, so they weren't just sitting off on their own, 'cause we know that that, during that admission, they're very vulnerable to the new environment, so we really wanted to keep the same staff member with them during the process until they were formally inserted into the JDC operations after the admission, and so that was the big change in the admission process. Staffing ratios were reduced to a ratio of one staff member to every eight juvenile, and that reflects both JDAI standards and Prison Rape Elimination Act standards, which is also a movement, a growing movement, it's really infiltrating juvenile facilities now, and so we wanted to make sure, as the JDC starts addressing PRIA, that we might as well build that into the policy at this point, 'cause it reflects the same standard as JDAI, so it just gives it more support. Search protocol is another one of those that really is a big change for JDC staff, it is a change that reflects modern correctional practices, but it's a change to JDC staff, and the big insertion is the use of PAT searches on the juveniles. Previously, there was the inventory search and the wand search, or metal detector search done, and then it, it really jumped to what they, what's considered an admission or curtain search, where the juvenile goes behind the curtain, and then is viewed visibly from the shoulders up and knees down, as, while they're unclothed, they're in their undergarments. The PAT search allows them to stay clothed, and it allows for the same level of search, some argue an even enhanced level of search, but it doesn't require the juvenile to take off any of their clothing unless it's a coat or some sort of outer garment. This conforms with JDAI search protocol, as well as PRIA. Again, we wanted to check with PRIA to make sure we weren't in violation of any of their rules, and they acknowledge that that's actually the practice that they prefer. So we built in same-gendered rules, we built in as many safeguards as you can into a process like this, such as it's not, PAT searches aren't to occur in isolation between one staff member and a juvenile, they're, we prefer to occur in front of another staff member, or in front of a camera, where it can, where they have a level of protection afforded to the JDC staff member. But that's, that's another significant change for the JDC staff. And during, during the end of this policy process, we sought training from the sheriff's office, or the county jail, to train JDC staff on these PAT searches. And then the, the final one on here is the use of non-security detention, and it's really a policy that, this policy really reflects the JDC's practices strictly with the current facility, as the facility stands today. The nonsecure, what are, what are called the nonsecure beds at the JDC do not allow for programming access, they don't allow for educational access to the juveniles that are there, if they're there longer than twenty-four hours, and so we've put in procedures in this policy to move those juveniles either to a placement such as VOA, or to move them into a security detention to allow them access to that programming. It's kind of a difficult logic to understand, but, in this case, security detention is better for them for, from a programming and educational aspect, because they don't have access to that upfront, upfront in the non-security detention, unfortunately, they just have a room, and a table, and a television, and in back, they have the classrooms, and they have the program afforded to them. So there are safeguards put into the policy, so that, for example, chins are not allowed to go back into security detention, they're to be placed at VOA, there's processes in place to make sure those chins get a bed at VOA, if we have to bring back a delinquent from VOA, and that process is in the policy. So, and that was a late addition to the revisions, but as we look at JDAI, what the JDAI standards are, and the facility as it stands today, the juveniles in non-security detention are not being afforded the JDAI required programming access and educational access, and so that's what drove this policy. All right, and the last slide on revisions, restraints and use of force, these two policies were written to clearly articulate the use of force continuum, and really the use of restraints continuum, so that staff know the level of escalation and the level of force appropriate for a given situation. Now, the JDC is not like many other correctional facilities, they don't have less-than-lethal or lethal force, and so this continuum does not reflect that of an adult prison or an adult jail because of that, but it does reflect the case, you know, the verbal commands, if they have to restrain a juvenile, the circumstances for that, and the process, the procedures in place to train them on that continuum are, are written into the policy now, as well as, the JDC does have a restraint chair, and that is identified in this policy, and so one significant creation in this policy is the insertion of both medical review and qualified mental health professional review of that juvenile if placed in the restraint chair, 'cause as you can imagine, a restraint chair is a very significant level of restraint, and so we need to make sure the safeguards are in place medically and mental health-wise. The second on the slide, the employee code of conduct, really rewritten, it's really a code of ethics sort of policy, rewritten in a manner that reflects principles that JDC staff can actually act out, and can be measured on, can be reflected against, so really a clarification and revision of that policy. Scheduled activities and community programming, this policy, it's a series of policies, creates a programming team, an administrative programming team at the JDC that is required to meet and review the programs that are offered there, the level of content, the type of content, and who is delivering that content, in order to ensure that the best programming available is being offered to the juveniles there. And then finally, training, we rewrote the training, two policies, pre-service and annual training, to really put some boundaries on the training, put some, reflect the requirements of the training, also to necessitate and require the development of training manuals, and so that any time a new staff member comes in, or annually when staff members need training, they have a manual that details the training they are to be afforded and offered at those different times, and there's checklists involved in that manual as well. So the, the, the next slide is simply some additions that came out of this process, that I want to draw your attention to, the conditional release process is one of those, that really was driven by the JDAI model for the county, and that is an alternative to detention process, where a juvenile who scores is an alternative, has a parent, guardian, custodian, who is fit to take them back, is available for a conditional, or is eligible for a conditional release, while they await their temporary custody hearing, or their next court hearing. So this is a new policy, that's policy five point four, I believe, if my numbers are correct. And then the home detention chapter, chapter fourteen, is a brand-new chapter, not a brand-new practice, the home detention program wasn't in existence prior to this, it did not, however, have any policies governing it, and so that was a complete new writing of a policy chapter. And then, the last one is obviously the policy and procedure manual, and a policy built around the policy and procedure manual, which is really necessary to ensure the JDC goes through the, the manual, at least annually, to revise, to, to make sure it reflects their practices, and to revise it as necessary, based upon whatever the county is doing, or wishes to do, or what's best for the juveniles in that case. And so, what you have now is what I would consider, I put "completed" in quotes, because it's not officially completed until it's approved in a couple weeks, hopefully, but, like I said, it's been reviewed by the state's attorney's office, we emailed back and forth a few, a number of times, and worked out the logic to the revisions, the JDC's been known... The JDC's been notified of those revisions. They received the new policies. And so that's the extent of my involvement up until today, which is really the delivery of this new manual for your consideration. So I could either address questions now, or if there's questions on training or implementation, I could certainly turn it over to Todd, whatever you all would prefer.
Ryan, thank you so much for all your work. This is obviously very work-intensive, labor-intensive, and you've had a lot of people help you with that, so I'd ask if there's any comments that Todd or Erin or Kirsten would like to make in addition to what Ryan's already told us about? Any comments? No? Well, we look forward to reviewing this. There is a copy of it, for anyone who needs it, next to Commissioner Kelly. And on October 15th, which is a couple of weeks from today, we will adopt the policy. And then it's the big task of implementation, which probably is more important than the writing of the documents in the first place. So any questions or comments from the commission? Awesome job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Todd?
I want to thank Ryan for all the work that he did and keeping us on track and pushing through change, which is uneasy with a lot of old dogs. We've gone through a lot of changes in the last year, and there's still many, many more to come with implementation. So he did very well, and I want to thank the staff for making adjustments.
Todd, when this is approved, and I'm sure it will be on October 15th, what's the time schedule for implementation?
Well, for most of them, we have implemented, we implemented chapter nine, which was a big chapter, starting yesterday. The only thing that we have left, what we're trying to do is get everybody trained, and that's not easy when it comes to part-time staff members. So they're not allowed to work until they've gone through some of the training. So it's easy to hit full-time staff members, you know, when they can work and when they're scheduled, but it's difficult to get part-time staff members in. They may only work, you know, once every couple of weeks, and that might not be in conjunction with, you know, getting one person in to be trained. So we're hoping to wrap everything up by November 1st, to have all the training done with everybody. Michael Gate, our trainer, has been working, you know, nonstop with them on a weekly basis. What we really have left, I believe, we implemented, like I said, chapter nine. We have some things that are not earth-shattering in food services, hygiene, facility, housekeeping. A lot of them are just kind of reviews and going over the new way things are written and how we're going to do things differently, you know, from laundry services to other things. That's due by the 23rd to the 27th. That was, they've worked on that. This week, they're supposed to review intakes, admissions and releases, and that was one of our first policies that we did implement, was we had to do some remodeling of the JDC. We had added admission interview type of room, computers, phones, things like that. So we had the war of the privacy for not only the admission, but phone call and things like that for kids. So basically, some of it's just, the biggest one that we're going to struggle with is healthcare services. And that's one that I have made contact with, Family for Cent, Family Center for Medicine. I've had contact with Marty McDonald. He's looking at some things, and then we're trying to go through Falls Community Health that left messages there. But that's something that I think, you know, to implement that, we're going to have to have a contract in place. And the question there is the dollar amount. The current policy will read that a child is in detention will need a physical if they've been in detention for one week. So by the end of the first week, they're going to have to have a physical. In talking with Marty McDonald, he indicated, I indicated there would probably be up to 10 physicals a week, which would be one full day, his estimate that a doctor would be required, which I assume would be extremely expensive. He was going to look into that and talk to others and get back to me, hopefully within a couple of days. And I did say we don't need a, you know, blood work and things like that, but we do need to have, our nurse does a screening. We can gather a lot of the information on weight and blood pressure and height and all that. Then we'd like somebody, whether it be a physician's assistant, a resident, or, you know, a doctor, to do a, what I would call, short physical, a brief physical, that would not take a considerable amount of time. Obviously, a kid comes in with any type of emergent issues, our nurse sees them and we take them out to a doctor to be seen right away. But this would be ongoing, and there's some timeframe issues. If the kid comes in, the doctor visits us on Wednesday, and the kid comes in Tuesday and may have court on Friday and released, he's got to be seen the next day on Wednesday, which would be, you know, I estimated, most of the kids that are in the JDC, there's probably 10 or 15 of them right now that would need to have a physical, they've been with us that long. And there's that cost issue and whether or not, how we're going to pass that on to other counties, because we're not at this point, including our qualified mental health professional services. So healthcare would be one, and I wanted just to go over a couple, you know, the medical services, that's ongoing. Hopefully, we can work that out, as to where we get a doctor, you know, or a physician's assistant there, one, you know, for a short period of time. It'd be great to have them twice a week from, you know, four o'clock to five o'clock and get, you know, three or four or five physicals in, depending on what they, what's decided as a, as a physical. We have implemented, chapter nine was implemented yesterday, changed our staff ratios. Our ratios have gone from basically one to 12 in a classroom to one to eight. I spent a good deal of time yesterday in the classroom watching kids, because we don't have enough staff. Anytime there's any issues going on with kids, like an admission or, you know, just put things in frame of mind, when we have a kid that is, comes in and is intoxicated and needs to be checked on every five minutes, a staff member cannot be in a classroom and then go check on them, it changes the ratio in that classroom. So we had about 17 or 18 kids yesterday. We had them all in one classroom, but that was three staff members that were needed to watch that classroom, which I agree with the policy. But then at the same time, we had a number of admissions coming into our facilities, ordered in from court, and we had a number of intakes. So it takes people away from being able to supervise those kids. And we can deal with this, and we can maintain the ratio, but at times, in order to do so, we're going to put kids in their cells. We're going to get that number down to 16 if we only have two staff members available. So that's the downside of, you know, a little bit of that. Is it a problem all the time? No, it is not. Is it a problem this morning? Yes, the kids didn't get out in time. I had to send two caseworkers back prior to eight o'clock to help get kids out. So there is some, kind of some staffing issues with ratio. Non-secured detention, which was on Ryan's presentation, there is, we're on hold with that right now, and I guess I need guidance either from Ken as a co-chair. The policy that we wanted to implement was that youth would spend less than 24 hours in our non-secure area, and then essentially, we would, we had a policy written that they would move to one place or another. If they were a child in need of supervision, we would swap them. If Volunteers of America was full, we would swap them with a kid over there to make sure that they got over there if they were a child in need of supervision. If they were a delinquent, we'd place them in the back of the building. That is because they could, you know, then go to our school and participate in, the gym is there, the library, other activities like that. Judge Long, who's the presiding judge and current juvenile judge, thought that that was okay. However, Judge Hoffman wanted that to go in front of a partnership committee. So my question is, who makes the decisions? The county or the partnership committee? So we have, have done a lot of things with qualified mental health professional that's working out great. We have a lot of suicide prevention procedures in place, and we're regularly seeing people from Southeast behavioral, visiting with kids that are having any type of issues. We're reassessing kids a lot of times on a daily basis to see whether, what services they might need. We've had a couple that have been sent to AVERA through having involved a non-health professional, you know, indicate that that was necessary. That's, you know, in a nutshell, that's kind of where we're at. We've implemented most of these things. We're hoping for October, for November 1st to get all of the rest of them. You know, we can commit to getting those, except for some of the ones with the services. I can't implement non-secure detention at this point if we're not, you know, unless I get a go-ahead someplace that says, you know, follow that policy, and I don't know what the partnership group even needs.
Commissioner Heiberg, I think you're first.
Yep, you're fine.
Anyone else?
What?
Commissioner Kelly? On that physical issue, are you working with School of Medicine also on that, or have you been?
Well, I've asked, I believe that some of the residency programs go through the Center for Family Medicine, and at least that's what Marty McDonald indicated. And I said, it could be a physician's assistant, I believe. You know, I'm going to ask the medical professionals to define physical and who's able to do one of those.
Every juvie has to have a physical, or if they're there for longer than?
One week. That's.
So you said, if they brought in a juvie on Tuesday?
Tuesday.
And the doctor would?
Only visits Wednesdays. I mean, then we'd have to get that child a physical or somehow arrange that next Tuesday their week would be up. So if they stayed past a week, you know, it's a very, it's a very tight standard. I mean, it's one week, so.
Is there a way they can stretch that to eight days, or, I mean, the week is just an arbitrary number?
It is, but that's the JDI standard. Now, we don't, we're not required to follow their standards. We have a restraint chair, and that is not one of the standards of JDI. You know, there's one that they would like us not to have.
So we can deviate somewhat?
Well, we can deviate, yeah. Most places, I don't know of any place that follows JDI 100%, but I, you know, so there can be.
So you could change that to eight days if that poses a problem?
Or two weeks, or, I mean, if a kid goes to camp, they don't necessarily get a physical in the one week that they're at their camp. But as long as we're dealing with the emergent issues, I think it's important. But I think if they're going to be with us with any length of time, we do need to get a physical. I don't, you know, one week is what the standard is at this point. Whether we deviate from that in policy and practice, we'll have to, we'll have to make that decision.
When one comes in, do you do any assessment immediately on health issues? Do you do a blood pressure or anything like that?
Yes, we do. They're screened, there's a suicide screening that goes on, there's all their vitals and blood pressure, temperature, things like that are all taken if they are intoxicated, not normally. They are, if there's any sign of intoxication, they are put on what's called an intox status, and we have procedures for that, how to deal with that. But if a kid would just come in and had been arrested for burglary, they would not, they'd go through a number of questions that are done at screening time, but as far as doing any, you know, taking their blood pressure, we would not do that upon admission generally.
You have three people that didn't want to speak, and the one thing that you said, Todd, that gives me some concern is you talked about deviation between policy and practice. I don't think that's acceptable at any point.
No, it isn't.
Well, I think I heard you say that there's going to, there's potential for changing the practice versus what the policy was as far as?
You follow the policy, but the policy can be changed.
Right.
That's what I'm trying to say.
That's true, but not the practice.
Yeah, if we're going to have, you know, we can't put the policy in place as far as physicals go until we have a doctor. So that would be one of the things. And I, you know, if the commission, you know, we're going to have to see what the number's on. If it's $100,000 a year, I think you're going to want to be involved.
Commissioner Heiberg?
I was just going to say that the policies have been reviewed by Kirsten and found to be sound. And so I think we'll just move forward with reading what we have in front of us, and we've got a couple of weeks to read through them.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner McFarland? You stay here long enough, we'll have you elected.
I don't think he wants to.
That conflicts with my immediate plans. Commissioner, it would be our intention, and in a couple of weeks, October 15th, we would bring to you at that time, we will be crafting a resolution, and that of adoption, with an effective date of November 1st. That's the date that Todd has assured us that we can have those policies and procedures, that his staff has had the opportunity to be trained and go through with them. If there's any, if there's some doubt on that particular effective date, then we can change that in the resolution of adoption. But at this juncture, from where we've been working, and the goal is, is to have those implemented and effective as of that date. I know, I've been working with Todd and giving him the suggestions about securing the necessary contracts for the medical portion of it, and, you know, that's certainly something that we want to make sure happens within this next month. But if you have doubts about the date, that's the time in the resolution of the implementation date, or the effective date. But this is a big project. It's something we've been working on for, you know, Ryan was contracted in February. He's had meetings after meetings with not only staff, but administration, with the JDI coordinator, with members of the FIT implementation team, with the state's attorney's office. I mean, he's done a lot of vetting of these particular policies, and that's why they're being brought to you as they are. But a lot of people have done a lot of work on this, so.
Thank you, Ken. Erin or Ryan, would you have any other comments to make? You guys have been extremely involved in this also.
Good morning, Commissioners. Erin Surska, JDI coordinator. And I just want to kind of mirror what Commissioner Heiberg and Ken said. There's been a lot of people involved with these policies. I think, I mean, we have a corrections expert contracted to do this and worked with the team of an attorney, looking at very high standards. The JDI standards are very high, and not any site that I know of in the nation is 100% compliant. However, our kind of project lead on this did a fabulous job, working with staff, JDC administration, JDI coordinator, myself, which is me, the facility inspection team, and other professionals that have youth in the facility to pound out this book that does walk the line between having best practices and reality. And another thing is just to think, I mean, because these kids, once they're admitted, there are responsibilities. We want to make sure that we have policy and procedures that are, you know, as high standards we can implement and follow while they're under our care.
Thank you, Erin. Ryan, you got a few minutes before you have to get to class or wherever you're headed? Any other comments?
My only comments, Commissioners, would reflect what Ken and Erin both stated, that they walk a fine line of best practices in corrections, in general in corrections, and best interest of the county and best interest of the juveniles. And I think that the policies that you have in front of you reflect that. The specific standards, such as a seven-day physical or other timelines that are in the policies, come out of my expertise in corrections, as well as conversations with medical professionals locally, qualified mental health professionals, JDI professionals, and the like. And so they've been reviewed by an attorney, so I would recommend that those timelines and those numbers be considered under that frame and that lens, rather than just arbitrarily dismissed or changed, because there's a considerable amount of logic and evidence and discussions going behind those sorts of ideas. So that would be my final comments.
Ryan, just for the audience's sake, would you just briefly tell us about your background? I think most of us know, but I think it would be important for the general public to hear that, and where you're coming from and what your experiences are.
Certainly. So my educational background, what qualifies me for a task like this, I believe, is my education from the University of Cincinnati in their corrections master's degree program, which is hovers between number one and number three in the nation in terms of graduate programs, training correctional professionals. I also, subsequent to that program, served the state of South Dakota in the parole division for two years, prior to taking the position at the University of Sioux Falls, where I teach primarily in criminal justice and corrections, which I've done for the last, going into my fourth academic year. And I will say, my time with the state, those two years with the state, included 24 long months of policy revision and implementation, both on, for parole services as well as the parole board.
parole board functions and processes. And so I'm no stranger to this process is what I would get at.
And on a side note, Commissioner?
You need to go.
And on a side note, Commissioner, just to tell you how much Ryan is thought of and that the state of South Dakota has stolen him and that during, we still have some contract time remaining with Ryan, but the state has, wants to use him for policies and procedures with SB 70. So his work is highly thought of.
Absolutely. Erin, do you have other comments?
I mean, wanted to know what they said. It's been great working with Ryan and his expertise and as I can tell you, I've conferred with him on many things coming across this JDAI process with his corrections expertise. But also just to wrap things up in reference to our policies, these are, like you've heard, we've had medical expertise, mental health expertise, corrections expertise, JDAI, the administration all involved. And these are practices that are implemented across the nation in facilities very similar to ours or bigger than ours and followed through and have the staffing. So if there's, you know, any questions, I know we brought up staff to look at the other facilities and how they get things implemented and, and the policies followed, so.
And pay thanks to the JDC staff.
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
It's a lot of change.
Yep. When we get to implement or the adoption of this, I think we'll recognize their involvement. Any other comments? If not, this was a quote, "a briefing." We look forward to continuing the conversation in two weeks and adopting this. And again, Ryan and Erin and Todd, you guys have done an incredible job along with Kirsten, so thank you so much for your involvement to get this wrapped up. With that, we'll go to item 15.
Minnehaha County Commissioner lays on reports.
Are there any lays on reports this morning? If not, we'll go to item 16, new business. Anybody have any new business? 17 is old business. If not, we do need to go into exec session for a legal briefing and personnel, so.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to go into exec session for a legal briefing by council and personnel. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We'll get together in two minutes. Thank you.